Moisture though, that's for darn sure.
Right? Talked to my, yeah, I talked to my friends up above Monument Lake and Mike was plowing all day. He said they had between twenty and twenty-four inches up there, so.
Well, great. That's supposed to get us again on Wednesday. There's an eighty percent chance, they say. We'll see how much that brings, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Linda. Jim?
Boy, I sure hope that, uh, you know, that snow that they got up the north end of the state helps them with their fires because.
Yeah.
Man, them people up there, they're hurting bad.
A li- little, yeah, a little over twenty inches on one of them and about thirteen inches on the other. It definitely brought containment up, so that's good.
Good, good.
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, welcome to today's work session. Today is Monday, October the twenty-sixth, uh, twenty twenty. The, uh, go-to meeting for the city council, the city Trinidad. Work session will now come to orders and the time is now five P M. Um, we have three items plus an executive session later on and a special meeting. But the first, for the first three items are the work session. We have a twenty-twenty-one budget discussion, uh, which will involve, uh, city council to go over our budget, uh, preliminary, see where, where we stand. Item two, discussion regarding commitment to rainy day funds. Item three are murals and item four, uh, discussion of other agenda items. So, uh, let's go ahead and get started with item number one. Twenty-twenty-one budget discussion. Cheryl, do you want to lead us, please?
Mayor, uh, Cheryl, uh, will probably be sharing her screen while, while she gets that going. I just wanted to say that, you know, staff, uh, put your.
This conference will now be recorded.
What was needed. I do want to add, and I think I mentioned this, uh, in previous budget discussions, but I want to, uh, add that under revenues, uh, we have taken, uh, six hundred thousand of the marijuana funds and put them into the budget, um, for one-time expenses to cover a lot of these items and Cheryl can get into that a little more, but, uh, just so council knows, in twenty-seventeen, we had the backfill three hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and ten thousand dollars in twenty-eighteen, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in twenty-nineteen, three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and we're projecting anywhere between two fifty and three hundred this year. Uh, part of the reason to move that money over and just budget it into revenues is, uh, you know, as you know, we've added quality of life officer, event planner, E D coordinator, three police positions. And now we're going to, in this budget, we propose an outdoor rec coordinator and a city planner to fill those positions, so, um. Well, in order to cover all that, um, uh, we feel like, you know, marijuana is not going away and I'm thinking taking six hundred thousand out of their staff's, come up with that, uh, would help to balance the budget and get these positions filled that we need to, to move forward, um. And also, uh, built into this budget, and Cheryl will get to it, we've been back and forth in union negotiations. Uh, we're proposing a five percent raise for employees, four percent cost of living, and one percent toward their retirement. Um, what that does is it gets almost everybody on board with the class and comp, uh, study that we did a few years back and we've not been able to, uh, define and, and get complete, so it, it gets us a lot closer as we go there, um. With that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl unless there's questions.
Uh, Mike, you were talking about the, the, the six hundred thousand, uh, does that coming out of our rainy day fund? Is that where that's coming from?
Uh, well, it comes out of the marijuana funds and, and city council would have to authorize us to do that. Um, it would, uh, possibly reduce the rainy day funds a bit, um, it would overall would reduce that, uh, Cheryl would have the yearly number projected by six hundred thousand toward, um, toward our, our regular budget.
I, I guess the other part of that is we could see what our, uh, third quarter revenues, uh, are, uh, and see what happens with that, I guess. That would, we take that into consideration. Okay.
Sure.
Okay, uh, that being said, Cheryl, go ahead and take over, please.
Okay, good evening, council. Um, in your packet, you should have had a, a preliminary budget work session summary sheet. Kind of just devised or listed all the changes that we've, um, added to this budget. Uh, you would, you would senior positions added, of course, the, uh, public safety increases so that their class and comp is actually complete and they are on, uh, they are caught up with the class and comp spec piece. Um, and then Mike did discuss the four percent, one percent increase for salaries and retirement. We also included the city planner position, a parks and rec, outdoor rec coordinator position. Uh, we were, it included the fleet maintenance mechanic position, um. Actually, that probably should say supervisor. If you recall, last year, we budgeted, um, outside contract services to cover that fleet supervisor because they're going to try to outsource the work. Well, it never came to fruition in two thousand twenty, so we're going to pull that money that we, uh, set aside for outsourcing, for outsourcing and then put it back into the budget for salary distribution. And then, um, economic development has asked for social media coordinator and grant writer. They're both part-time positions. Um, and then we'll go to the sales tax revenue.
Cheryl, who is asking for, who is asking for that last, who is asking for that last item there?
It, it was Wally, the economic development coordinator.
And he was asking for what again?
Part-time social media coordinator and a part-time grant writer.
Okay.
And then, the revenues, I am projecting seventeen and a half percent of sales tax revenue to be one-time revenue. And that's just considering if a marijuana were to decrease by a significant amount. Uh, fifty percent of that, um, I'm sorry, let me say this again. If marijuana was to go away, I don't think it would ever go away, more than fifty percent of what we're receiving right now. And I'm taking, um, a portion of that because we should probably always at least have fifty percent. And we're taking a portion of that to recognize for one-time expenses. That way we don't get comfortable recognizing the entire one hundred percent of the sales tax. And then I increased the sales tax and marijuana tax significantly because every year I try to be conservative. I, I budget the amount that was, uh, recognized the prior year and I increased it just a little bit while every year it's above and beyond that. So I've stretched those revenues somewhat and, um, this, and I've increased it by one point two million dollars. And, okay, so that's kind of just overall, uh, general fund summary. Uh, Mike was talking about marijuana revenue. So all of the marijuana revenue has been budgeted in one-time expenses. And we're going to request the council to give, or to allocate fifteen percent of it or six hundred thousand dollars for ongoing expenses. And that's going to cover those positions that he talked about. Um, the quality of life officer, quality of life officer, the event planner, and E D coordinator. And on top of that, it'll include the three officers that we added last year, which really stretched our budget. And finally, the outdoor rec coordinator and the, the planner. Those total three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, um, I, I apologize. The officers total a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and then the other positions I mentioned total three ninety-six, so that gets us to six hundred thousand. But on top of that, we are not counting the time that staff, uh, donates pretty much to marijuana, uh, work. Uh, city clerk, Audrey Black Garrett, at least fifty percent of her time, if not more, is dedicated to marijuana. Um, Georgie does the conditional use permit, uh, takes up so much of her time. Fire department and police department, actually, police department has two employees dedicated to inspections. And then the fire department inspects each, um, store at least one, one time a year, if not more. And then we also have our building inspector. And then in my floor, we have myself and my students, um, on, we're on or about about twentieth of the month, we're spending two days, um, calculating and telling and counting marijuana money. So we're not even counting the indirect cost time of staff, uh, along with that six hundred thousand dollars worth of position. So that's, uh, our reason behind our request, fifteen percent toward, um, ongoing expenses. And yes, that would come out of the rainy day fund and/or the project fund. When we present allocations to council on a quarterly basis, we always include those three positions, the quality of life officer, the event planner, and the economic development coordinator. Um, by, if council were to allocate fifteen percent to, um, ongoing expenses, we wouldn't have to make that request every year. And the bad part about it is when we're making that request of council to allocate for those positions, those people have already been working, um, January through March before we even get that first quarter, um, allocation request to council. Um, so that's the little history behind the marijuana request. Does anybody have any questions? Because I know that's a lot of information and I wish that I was in front of you and point my mouth and tell you what page to look at. I, uh, just let me know how this, I can make this easier for you and we can go from there.
Oh, I do have a question on that, but, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll save my time, uh, for later on and I've, I've got a thought on that.
Two council members have questions, mayor. I'm sorry for that.
Go ahead. That's fine. Okay, who's, who had questions? Erin Obertree, go ahead.
Okay, I'm looking at this, um, delivery budget, uh, the one page thing that kind of explains what you've been talking us through. It says five percent marijuana revenue projects and I'm not sure where I'm seeing fifteen percent. Um, in that, on that first page, the second seg- segment down is five percent marijuana revenue, revenue projects. Is that supposed to be fifteen percent or, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. So within a budget, um, we have a department called marijuana projects. Um, and this, it's the five percent marijuana revenue project. So, so this year, we are budgeting four million dollars in receipt of marijuana tax. But I only, um, budget for, so on the revenue side, we budget four million. On the expense side, we're budgeting two point, two point eight, I believe, because we will not budget the amount that should go to the rainy day fund. And you can see that, um, I've highlighted on the spreadsheet that I'm sharing. Um, the two point three-three that you see there is, is actually less than six hundred thousand dollars. Um, we've worked it in as an ongoing expense so that we, um, our budget is balanced. And of course, if council says, no, we're going to have to move stuff around and figure out how to add these positions, um, possibly they would be similar to the way we request paying those three positions at this time, the event planner, quality of life officer, and E D coordinator. But that is the five percent revenue project department. That's all of the amounts that council, uh, allocates each quarter is posted to that department.
And is that what you're still proposing that we're going to do, just put it to that department or are you proposing something else? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time following this.
No, I apologize.
Well, I, if you can clarify, Cheryl, the five percent is how much we receive from, from the marijuana sales, correct? As marijuana taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So that's why it says five percent marijuana projects?
Yes. So if, if we don't do the, if we don't move the fifteen percent of what we're requesting, this amount here would be two point eight million.
So what you're saying is you want to take fifteen percent of the expected five percent marijuana revenue that comes in next year and put it, plug it into the budget instead of having it a special allocation every ti- every quarter?
Exactly.
Okay, all right, got it.
Thank you.
Okay, who else had questions?
Mr. DeBono, uh, unmute yourself.
Mayor, I think, there you are.
My, my Cheryl, Mike, can you answer this? Mike, you know, odd, odd question. And what factors determine what goes into the rainy day fund?
So, uh, council has passed an, uh, resolution. Um, thirty percent of marijuana revenue funds goes to the rainy day fund. Sixty-five percent goes toward marijuana or the project. And then five percent is for outside, uh, funding sourcing.
So those are, those are always the percentages all the time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, any other questions, uh, from council on that item?
I, I had a question, mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, if this is not germane to the immediate discussion, please let me know what, and I'm not sure who would answer this. What is a quality of life officer? And what, what are their duties? I don't mean like extensive, but just, uh, the higher.
Uh, Mike, could I answer that question?
Sure, uh, this was a request, uh, the quality of life officer, uh, does, you know, training with the Rangers, does, uh, uh, code enforcement, does, uh, interaction with the community. Um, is, is not a, a, it's called an officer, but it's not a sworn position. Uh, we have, uh, uh, two of them and, uh, they, uh, they tend to help out with the inter- action with residents, um, and, uh, quality of life. I know that's not a, a good.
No, that, that, that answers that, Mr. Valentine. I, uh, I'm sorry, now that I, all the cards are, uh, face up. I, I got that. I should, I should include that.
Uh, you know, this is, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and take my turn here on that particular item then. And, you know, one thing that I've, uh, you know, recognized is, you know, we've done quite a bit of, uh, projects, uh, around, you know, uh, in city hall, the different departments, uh, going forward or in the past. Uh, my personal feeling in that fifteen percent, we should probably take that, I, I would feel take it out of the projects, uh, the sixty, uh, five percent. And, uh, need be leave the rainy day fund alone. Uh, in the event, we need to take money from that rainy day fund to help with that fifteen percent project. Uh, we can do so, uh, because as you know, we are going to be discussing, uh, you know, the, uh, commitments, uh, on the next item for the rainy day funds. So I think a combination of those, I think, is something that means, so I think if we, if we take that fifteen percent out of the projects, uh, I, I feel like that might be the best, uh, way to go with this. I'm not sure if council has any, uh, other ideas. Karen?
Uh, I have a suggestion. I just hope Cheryl doesn't hit me the most times she's. Wouldn't be, you know, instead of doing that, that six hundred thousand, uh, is, uh, an expense out of marijuana money, can we make it to where a part of, of, anybody that's associated with marijuana enforcement, they get a portion of their, their wages from the marijuana money? And then the money that we save from their wages actually pay for these additional positions from the gym, from the general fund. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, it's, it's just a different way of how we're requesting it, um. But we have two categories of revenue. We have the ongoing and we have the one-time. So by moving the six hundred thousand dollars from one-time, which is typically where it sits, we're putting it into ongoing, covering those types of costs. So the three P D officers and then all of the staff that works with marijuana is just filling in the gap for that type of work.
Oh, okay. I was just concerned when you said, we're kind of doing it backwards because we wait three months to authorize payment to these people that have been working and I thought maybe that might be a solution, but you got a better one, baby. I have no questions.
Uh, are there any questions with, uh, what I mentioned about, uh, taking that fifteen percent from our projects fund rather than the rainy day fund? Uh, that would be on an ongoing basis?
If I may, uh, whenever we present, typically when we present the first quarter marijuana allocation for council to approve, those three positions are included in the project for the sixty-five percent marijuana funding. And then at the end of the year, we pose the, um, the general fund subsidy not also fit as a project fund. So I don't know if that helps you make your decision.
Counsel?
I think until we have our discussion about the rainy day fund and how we're going to have to switch it from how we're doing it to allocations of that money, I think it's hard to make a decision how we're going to leave that fund alone or how the money's going to come out of that or how it's going to stay. I think, you know, we're trying to have a discussion about it without having our discussion about that fund and how we need to be allocating it to stay within the rules.
Okay, good, good question. Any others?
I, I agree with, uh, with Rusty. I also like Karen's idea because it more directly associates the work that they're doing with the marijuana revenue. And so it helps them to see that, that this is where a part of their salary comes from. And I think that's a helpful notion.
Uh, Cheryl, would that, how cumbersome would that, uh, would that be doing it that way?
Um, that's probably a question for Donna and Audra, but allocation of salary is very difficult at this juncture.
Okay. I thought it might be kind of, kind of difficult to do and cumbersome.
I think mayor and council, I actually prefer the approach for these positions as opposed to allocating time. Evidence right now, we, we, um, are allocating those positions, um, salary benefits. And so it's just, it's extra steps and it's always subject to human error when we're, when we're taking those steps so that they hit the budget correctly. So I, I have to agree, the preference is just the flat dollar amount from the marijuana fund and then, um, I mean, it's no different, I guess, in a sense than what was done in your past. It's just going a little bit higher, I mean, how, thank you.
Well, you know, things I, I, my concern is putting an extra load on, on staff, uh, trying to allocate, uh, and break out these numbers, uh, on a monthly basis or however it's done. Uh, so, you know, staff is, you know, they, you guys are pretty buried with work all the time anyhow, so, um, adding more is, is my concern. Uh, well, it looks like what we'll do is, uh, we'll take Rusty's suggestion and I, I think that, uh, it'd be good to, uh, kind of marry the two when we get to that next item, uh, but at this point, Cheryl, if you want to continue?
Okay. Um, and yes, uh, councilman stood out a suggestion as a great idea. We'll see how it all ties together when we get through this. Um, general fund, revenues and expenditures are narrowly balanced. We have a sixty-nine thousand dollar, um, surplus, which would be moved into conting- contingency. But I would like to stress to council that the budget isn't even close to finished. It's the working document. We're constantly getting, um, quotes and costs and different, um, amounts so that we know what to plug into the budget for next year. And we're just fine-tuning it and cleaning it up. When that, when we get the first and second, um, reading of the ordinance, um, it's going to be as neat and clean as possible. Um, but anyways, that's where, um, general fund sits.
Uh, Cheryl, you don't think that, uh, like I said, you're, you're still getting numbers out there from quotes and bids, I guess, for different things. Uh, you don't anticipate, and of course, uh, Mr. Valentine, you don't think that we'll have to have another work session prior to the, uh, first reading?
I, I do not, mayor. I think, well, let me just say this as we go this, through this tonight and to the first reading. I'm hoping council has had time to review this and, and make all the changes. I think, uh, Cheryl's point is that, um, we're showing, uh, sixty-nine thousand dollar, uh, net gain, I believe. Um, but as we fine tune, that number may, may come in higher or lower. Uh, I don't think it's going to be significant. Cheryl, you think it will?
I agree. If, if there's anything that's significant, it would be highlighted in, in the budget summary. Um, but at this point, it's just fine tuning, you know, cleaning it up, making sure our numbers are about where we need them to be. There won't be any much more significant items or changes.
You know, the, the concern I still have, uh, somewhat, you know, it did play out with this last year. Thank God for that. And we've actually had an increase in our, in our tax revenue. Uh, you know, this COVID nineteen, uh, may still kick us in the behind, uh, for the next, you know, six months or so. Uh, we don't know what that brings. I think that we've just got to be cognizant of that, uh, to make sure that, uh, you know, we don't put too much ahead of us. I think that's my, that's the concern, I think, that probably all of us on council have, and you probably have thought of that as well.
Um, and like I said, I, I did increase sales tax and marijuana tax significantly, but I still held back, um, just in case. I, I tend to be very conservative, but every year it proves that I'm too conservative and that's. I, I tend to be very conservative, but every year it proves that I'm too conservative and that's why our fund balance is growing. Um, you know, I budgeted three million in marijuana taxes, collect three point five. So then I'll budget three point five, we collect four. There's just no way to know. Um, again, I, I feel like I stretched it, been a little bit more, um, not conservative. But again, there's still some tucked away just in case something happens.
You know, at, at some point, we will reach a ceiling, whether it's this year or next year or year after. But I think at some point, we probably will reach a ceiling. Um, especially, you know, New Mexico keeps talking and, uh, we'll just have to see what happens. And of course, I'm glad that you said that, uh, you've taken into consideration a, uh, if something were to happen, we would, we, where we could lose, uh, up to fifty percent of that revenue, that we would still be on track to the expenditures that we would have. So I'm glad that you've taken that into consideration.
And here's an interesting, um, piece of information for you. Through August, our sales tax is actually nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than this time last year. So I don't know about COVID, but it didn't know about us.
That's good. That is good, okay. All right, Cheryl, good, continue.
That wraps up, um, general fund. Did anybody have any questions on individual departments within the general fund? Police department, fire, anything like that?
Counsel, any questions on the general fund budget? I guess not.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Rusty, go ahead. Go ahead, Rusty.
No, I was just gonna, they, um, I was gonna ask about the dump now that it's enterprise funded stuff. And how is it looking and coming along with increased fees? Are we looking good at the dump?
Yes, we are. I believe we're projected to collect, oh, we'll get there, but I think about twenty-five to forty-five thousand more in revenues and expenses. However, they are requesting, um, to add another position. We're not sure that we could do that. We need a little bit more time to gauge how the rental fees are coming in before we can make that decision.
And you were, you were going to cover that anywhere anyhow, couldn't, uh, weren't you, Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, that, that's down in the packet there, that, and I saw that, that, um, as far as the, that department, okay.
So we're gonna move on to the power and light fund. Um, I think. Go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry, Cheryl, I have just one question, if you know anything about this. Um, Karen and I, when we met with the police department about code enforcement several months ago, one of the things they told us is that they were expanding the number of officers who would be doing code enforcement work. But I look, I see that it just has one code enforcement officer that's part of the, the planned budget for next year. Is there any follow-up on that? Are they going to be expanding that number, having quality of life people do that work? Do we know anything about that? If this is in the right, I don't think that question's somebody.
Yeah, I believe Donna was on the call, she would know that, um, they did not ask for any more positions this year, but, huh, Donna can answer that?
If she's not, uh, no, they have not asked for positions, but they are covering, uh, with a new code enforcement officer and they're cross-training with, uh, two other quality of life officers so that we're gonna get better coverage. Uh, they're looking at the whole, um, office and how that's done. So, um, that does not include any new positions.
Oh, okay, well, I'm glad that that cross-training is going on. And I think it would be ideal for the quality of life people to have more interaction with people on, on those issues. It would save, save us time and it would save, we were directed where it needs to go.
Uh, Ms. Ogutree, you know, when that, when that came up, that was the whole idea behind those two quality of life officers to help fill in. And, uh, once they get trained, they can do some additional work to help code, to help code enforcement.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right, so we'll move on to power and light. Um, this fund typically struggles, the revenue's always been expensive. We're working on a meter project now. Hopefully that's gonna solve those issues. Um, we're forecasting a revenue over expense for two thousand and twenty-one, um, about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we are looking at a shortage in twenty-twenty of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. But that's because we really, we're not sure where the finished, um, meter project is. So a portion of that could be moved into twenty-twenty-one. Um, and again, this is one of our funds that we're, we're working on, trying to get those revenues to catch up to our expenses.
Any questions on power and light? Uh, Cheryl, um, like I said, I looked at the, at the budget for the power and light and, you know, the, since I've been on council, uh, that seems to be an ongoing issue every year, uh, that come up short. And I, I really don't, um, you know, get concerned. And there's a couple of other departments in here that we'll be discussing. And, uh, they're getting backfilled by the, the water department. Uh, I mean, we're fortunate that we're able to do that. Uh, my concern is, uh, I would hope that we could get a little closer to there wasn't so much money that had to be withdrawing from the water fund in the event that we have to do a major project of some kind that the money would have to come out of their fund balance. So, uh, that, that's a concern to me with, uh, you know, the power and light and a couple of these other funds that come up short. I don't know what the answer is. I think that that's something that, uh, you know, management needs to take into account, uh, going forward to see if there's anything that we need to do.
Correct. So just so you know, mayor, we're working with, uh, our consultants with, uh, N M T P. They've come down, they've tested our meters. We're, we're working toward, uh, looking for the lost, uh, uh, kilowatts. Generally, there's transmission loss of, you know, below seven percent. We're finding that based on what we sell and what we purchase, we've got transmission loss of over twenty to twenty-five percent. We're looking to pinpoint that with outside consultants. Um, and then just in utility billing and, uh, the, the metering is going to really be a, a good tell on, on, because we'll have real-time data, uh, from what we purchase to what's being sold daily. So, uh, we're, we're drilling down on that. Uh, and, um, yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're not working on that.
Well, you know what, well, you know, what's, what I'm looking here, and, you know, this has been an ongoing issue as well within, uh, some of the, uh, you know, some of our utilities, is the amount of bad debts, uh, that we have. And, uh, you know, how we take care of those is, is another story, because we're always gonna have some. And I know it's, uh, it's not up to us to tell these people, you know, you, yeah, I mean, we gotta tell them, they gotta pay. But, uh, if they don't want to or if they just can't, I, I guess it's an ongoing issue. Uh, there again, I, I don't know what the, I don't know where the answer is there.
Well, and Cheryl has been on that, and those bad debts have been going down over the last, uh, three, four years. Um, we will bring forward, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the billing question where we extended people and extended people. We brought it before council, the idea of, uh, streamlining the billing process, um, at a work session. And then COVID hit and, you know, we're not able to do any shut-offs or charge anymore, uh, based on the governor's orders. Um, if this thing ever clears up, we're going to, uh, Cheryl will bring forth that order that's, uh, more sooner than later about streamlining our billing. That only helps us, but it helps the customer so they don't get so far out with their bill until we shut them off and then they're, you know, they're way behind. So, uh, just wanted to let you know.
Well, you know, in the power and light, that's, that's one, uh, issue. The, uh, electrical grid that we have here in town, that's a, an issue that we hear about, I hear about periodically and been hearing about it for some time. Uh, at what point do we need to, uh, consider something to upgrade our electrical grid or begin to look at it? And that's where my concern is, is that, uh, it's gonna require money possibly from, uh, the fund balances to begin to take care of these, of that issue. Uh, so anyway, it's just, uh, food for thought.
To expand on Mike's comments about bringing that ordinance force to council, my, I'm imagining another work session to start over because we have new council members so we can explain what our thoughts are about doing so. But we have planned on trying to bring that force the first, um, I'm sorry, the second meeting in January. And hopefully we can get it enacted till that. June first, it would take effect if, um, we're allowed to, you know, disconnect or charge for reconnect, depending on what the governor, um, governor's orders are at that time. But at least it would be in place and we would be able to enact it if it's timed.
Uh, Cheryl, you know, in here, under the debt service, there's a loan interest of eighty, you know, this year was ninety-one, next year's eighty-five. Uh, what loan do we have out there that's costing that?
That is the A M I project financing.
Okay, good. So what you've done with these is those loan interest that are shown across the board of the utilities, that's what it is. It's the, it's that financing, okay, that you've broken out, good, all right.
That's correct. Are there no other questions?
I, I did have a question, just really quick. That, that debt finance, do you have a guarantee that we are going to see that as a savings on the, uh, completion of that project, correct?
That is correct. Uh, the guarantee is that, uh, the, uh, revenues we see from actually charging for what, uh, people are using, will pay for that debt service. So, correct statement.
Hey Cheryl, under the power and light again, under, uh, other revenue, you got a, let's see, hold on a minute. No, I think I've got my own, I had to answer my own question. We'll go on.
Okay, uh, we're on to water. Um, this fund had a lot of money in reserves, which, um, I believe when Mr. England was here, we started tapping into it so that we could start correcting water infrastructure. And that's what we've been doing so far. Um, each year we budget, and also we had, um, a grant from DOLA to do work on water sewer infrastructure. Um, and each year, uh, when we're doing those projects, I think we're dipping in the reserves and we end up bringing in more funding than we expended. Um, that's why it looks like we're gonna have a change of fund balance of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-one. Um, that's if we actually do expend the money and, um, expend above and beyond what revenue was brought in on that water sewer infrastructure. We have several project plans, um, uh, the Segundo Water Line, Valdez River crossing the Western Water Line, and then the, you know, I believe it's University Street. And then there's a well at City Garage. So those total seven hundred thousand dollars. And then we have to budget up a little bit of completing our, uh, uh, the A M I project. And then there's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is for the chemical feed, upgrade of the water treatment. So when we see that we're dipping in the reserves for water, it's typically those, um, those big ticket projects.
Questions?
Any questions about water?
Questions from council on the water fund? Uh, Cheryl, that DOLA infrastructure grant of two hundred and fifty thousand, which, which one is that one? I can't remember what, for what was that purpose? Mike, you might have that answer.
Actually, that, what? It's a, it's a grant from GOCO for the purgatory, so sorry. And you, Mike, you do have to answer that. It's Karen's program?
Watershed project, yeah, where they, they do, uh, mitigation in our, you know, watershed and long the purgatory.
Okay.
Um, they just successfully getting that grab. Um, I think it's every two years, so that is what that is.
Okay. Okay, that explains it.
Okay. If there aren't any questions, we'll move on to, uh, the gas department. Um, the gas department has a very healthy fund balance. Try dipping into it to do those major infrastructure projects, just, or just have a healthy fund balance. Um, projects, uh, budgeted for two thousand and twenty-one include, um, a rec, the regulating station. They're gonna upgrade that and, or they're rebuilding it. And then five hundred thousand dollars to work on industrial park. And that's it for gas. Are there any questions?
Questions about the gas, do you have gas, uh, budget? Hey, Mike, uh, you know, we, uh, a while back, we had a discussion, uh, kinda, you know, about trying to pinpoint, uh, projects so that we have a strategy moving forward. And I believe that you are going to get with, uh, uh, your directors to see what, what their recommendations were. Are you, we're still working on that, because, uh, you know, with these fund balances that we have across the board, uh, to take those into consideration, uh, whether it's more paving or combination of paving, gas, water, electrical, whatever it is, uh, is that something that you are beginning to have discussion on or will you be having discussion shortly?
That is correct, mayor. It's an ongoing discussion, um, and I don't wanna blame everything on COVID. We were moving towards a strategic, everybody having a strategic plan and even, uh, having a retreat with council to let you know, um, COVID hit, uh, meeting directors are still, uh, working toward having that strategic plan, um, and we'll bring that forward. The, uh, the fact that it's now, uh, separated and we have directors in each, uh, utility department, it's really a bit helpful and they're, they're able to get moving these projects, uh, moving, uh, a little quicker on that, so.
Okay.
Uh, long-winded sense to say, yes, we are moving toward a strategic plan.
Uh, Ms. Valentine, this is kind of beside the, the point to some degree, but yet it's, you were talking about a retreat. Uh, I know that, uh, through the health department, we're able to, uh, have, I think, a hundred and seventy-five and less because of the increases of, uh, people that have, you know, gotten the COVID and it decreases that number. Um, that may be something we may want to consider, maybe in late December or sometime. Uh, so just, just another food for thought, where we can get together.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Cheryl, go ahead.
So we're on to the sewer fund. Um, sewer fund is actually starting to take care of itself now that it doesn't have the debt service, uh, payment. Um, I believe we're projecting to have a fund balance increase of one point one million. That has a lot to do with the, the two sewer infrastructure grants that, or, excuse me. We actually have three grants going right now for the sewers. So La Parca, Maricón Road, and then the sewer infrastructure, and then the water sewer, all three from DOLA. And those are helping to improve the sewer infrastructure. Therefore, there's an increase of the capital asset, um, of one point one million dollars. So, anyway, same thing holds true for two thousand and twenty-one. Eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars increase. And that is a. And that is again, the sewer infrastructure grant that are tied to sewer, and it's just increasing their fund balance. If we were to just take out the actual capital outlay for those funds, we're actually going to be recognizing about, I think sewer brought in, let's see, probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each year. So sewer's doing better, that's good news. Big ticket items is still, like I mentioned, those two projects, the sewer infrastructure and then the, I think you might call this the flip lining sewer project. That's going to finish off the remainder of the DOLA grant. And then there's portions of the Maricón Road, or La Porta Maricón Road that will also hit the books in 2021. Are there, oh, and also I did increase the CH2M Jacobs contract by the two and a half percent. But one of those, that's one of those items that we're waiting for our final contract so we know exactly what it's going to cost in 2021.
Questions on sewer? Ms. Valentine, that week that you were out and the lady came down and was looking at that property that, you know, where all the directors were up there and there was a gentleman there from the CH2M project up there and I just thought a question, I says, how are things going at the sewer plant? And he said, they're going well. He said that, I don't know if they've talked to you about this, but he said that there was one, I'm not sure, one building or something out there that in the next couple of years could have to be replaced because there's a lot of deterioration. Do you know anything about that? And when, Mike, that's not for this budget, I know, but have you heard about that?
Yes, they have, we're working toward a plan for that. It's just sewer gases and, and concrete just don't get along. So the, the concrete is deteriorating in this, it's the headworks building and well aware of it. And we're, we work it into our, our capital budget with Jacobs. And just so you know, we're, we're working on our last year of that and I will be bringing forward proposal for city council's consideration in the near future. But yes, I am aware of that.
Okay, good. Alright, go ahead, continue Cheryl.
We're going to move on to landfill. I still am working on getting this, pulling this part of landfill fund away from general. It takes, it's a little complicated. I have to reassign fund numbers and whatnot from working on it. But that's the reason for me saying that is because I don't have a statement of revenues and expenditures as I do the other utility funds. Hopefully, I will have that by the first reading and we'll be able to see how everything's flowing. But the landfill revenue summary and expense summary is a snapshot of what that's going to look like. Per councilman's question, it looks like landfill revenues are going to exceed expenses by about sixteen thousand dollars in 2020 and then thirty-three thousand dollars in 2021. Again, I'll remind you that they did request another position. Right now, they can't sustain that. But as more landfill fees come in, we're, we're seeing it, we're going to collect more than anticipated. And then we might have an answer possibly first quarter next year, might be able to move forward with a new employee. Other than that, that's, that's landfill.
Questions on landfill from council? Cheryl, and maybe Mr. Valentine, this might be the, the question, that other employee that they were wanting, would that employee be the person because we have now decided to go forward and shred all of that, the trees and vegetation that's taken up there? Is that probably the reason why they ask possibly for a new employee?
That is, oh, sorry. That's, that is partially the reason why, but just in general, we, we struggle to keep, keep things covered and intact with, with just the three employees we have out there now. The state is coming down more frequently with their inspections and we just, it's just hard to keep up. So we need to have another person on, on, on another piece of equipment out there. And it all, you know, being an enterprise fund, it, you have to work that out, you have to work through this. But the chipper is operational, remote, and for our safety officer, it was good to go. So they have been chipping where the operator and the loader can operate the chipper remotely. So it's just a workload that they can't keep up with.
Okay. So, you know, the, would there be a possibility, you know, Cheryl, you said that right now they could not afford a full-time employee. Could they afford like a half-time person? I don't know if that's a consideration, Mr. Valentine?
When Mr. Beach presented, he suggested a possibility of fifty percent landfill and fifty percent public work. But we're not sure, I guess, I don't, we really didn't look into it and put those numbers into the budget yet.
Okay, alright. That answers my questions.
Okay, we're almost there. Thank you for not, not snoring during the presentation. We're on to capital projects. This is again, another fund that we try to spend down, the fund balance. And then they just, those projects kind of get pushed out and we do environmental studies and then just, just little situations happen of the railroad, for example, with La Porta Maricón Road. It just, they hold us up. And anyway, we always are budgeting to try to spend down that fund balance capital because we need to get those projects out the door. You'll see that we, we actually did so in 2019. We actually took away one point six million of our fund balance. And 2020, because of those grants, we're going to increase fund balance a little bit, but then we worked it right back out in 2021 to spend that fund on. And I believe that you saw, if you look at the capital project, funding revenues and expenses, you'll see how we've allocated that, those expenses. See if I can give you any big ticket item explanation. So we did put, worked in a hundred thousand dollars for grant match in case any capital project grants come forward. We have the match set aside. The fire department has a seventy thousand dollar exhaust system budgeted. And we also have one point five million budgeted for the ADA improvements to all the city buildings. We have the remainder of San Jose Trail at one point three million. And then we have an additional eight hundred thousand for streets and citywide paving. That's, that's pretty much it. The majority of those expenses are going to be La Porta Maricón Road and sewer infrastructure improvement. Also ask the remainder of the space to create common and Noah's Ark, but those were funded by marijuana.
Okay. Questions on sewer budget? Or capital, 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 excuse me. Cheryl, you know, I look at, you know, some of these fund balances that we have that are in here. And of course, like the water is pretty healthy and, you know, the gas department's fairly decent. Are we going to have any, are there any restrictions per Tabor or anything like this that we can get hit on?
I don't believe so in the enterprise fund. However, when you look at those fund balances, yes, they look healthy, but you have to remember that the assets are actually sitting in that, in that fund balance. I want to say that water's assets are seventeen, seventeen million. And then gas, their assets are sitting in there too. So those are included. You're not looking, you're not actually seeing the cash right there.
Okay, that's.
I can give those figures for you if you'd like. They're sitting in the audit. But I can break those out if you need to see them.
Would that be something that council would like to see, actual cash availability? Go ahead, Karen?
Yes, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, okay. Like I said, I was not aware that, you know, that that was not all cash. I thought that that was all cash, so it's the assets that we have that are in there. Okay.
The only, just the enterprise funds are like that. The general and the capital, that's actually cash.
Okay.
Alrighty, so we're on to the little ones. We made it gay. Lottery fund and tourism, there's nothing really significant. We discussed the lottery. Pretty much the money that we bring in, we turn around and try to get it expended out. It also has somewhat of a healthy fund balance. And we work it in, for example, six thousand dollars is budgeted in the equipment acquisition. And typically, it's the, the swimming pool that likes to use that funding. They buy new basketball courts or new lounge chairs and pools, items such as that.
Okay.
And then for tourism, you recall, without tourism. Oh, if you started it.
Sorry Cheryl, I didn't mean to interrupt you. But lottery funds are restricted to recreational, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
No. Okay.
On to tourism fund. As you recall, we split this out into the three different departments, the welcome center, tourism and trolley. They, I believe the tourism board's working on locking up some of that fund balance for sort of like a rainy day fund, so they can start building it to purchasing maybe possibly another trolley or something else. But they're going to let me know when they make that decision. They do have a healthy fund balance as well. In 2020, because of COVID, they pulled back significantly on their expenses. So it looks like they're going to have a surplus of ninety thousand dollars. But they, they turn around and they're going to try to get that expended next year. That's where tourism fund is.
Questions for tourism? Cheryl Dean, that I'm on the, you know, on the liaison to the tourism board and the question that has come to me is, you know, the city council is going to help out with the, with tourism and it looks like we got eighty-two thousand budgeted for them. And I'm sure they're going to be happy to, to hear that, that part of it. And of course, one of the things that they're trying to do is do some marketing, you know, going forward with everything that is going on locally. So I think that, hopefully, that things may work, work out where things can open up maybe this next year where they can get back to, you know, some form of normalcy that they've had. I don't know how long that's going to take, but I, I think they, it sounds like they've done a good job of containing their expenses.
And regarding general fund subsidy to tourism fund for the event planner, that's the fifty thousand dollars that is allocated by council each, or each year for the event planner. So that's a specific example of what Arda was talking about. The event planner and welcome center manager salary split. It's allocated between the general fund and between tourism. So that's general fund contribution to tourism is fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay, any questions, any questions that anybody's come across the entire budget? Now that we've gone through everything? Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to add?
Not really, Mayor, other than you have great staff working for you. And they've been really good through this budget process. Cheryl especially does an excellent job. But this is the budget presented and like Cheryl said, it's, we're tweaking, but it's, it's real close to, you know, where we're at should council approve it. We would move forward with those positions and with compensation for the staff, everything that we just went through. So I appreciate the staff. That's all I have.
Well, I, I do appreciate the fact that, you know, I know that there's been times in the past since I've been on council where we have been pressed for time to get a final budget passed. Just kind of getting down to the wire a couple of times. And I'm glad that, you know, things are coming together. They did last year fairly decent and this year again. So it's good, good to see that we're not being pressed for time, we're able to do this like we, like we should be doing. So good job to you and your staff. Alright, let's go on to item two, which is discussion regarding commitment of rainy day funds. And Mike, do you want to, or Cheryl, do you want to, which one do you want to fill us in according to what our auditor was talking about?
Oh Mayor, we could probably, we'll probably have to tank keying this one. Cheryl understands these funds totally. But in discussion with the auditor, I know we have a rainy day fund and it's really good to have that, but, and like the demo says, it's good to have a savings account, but the function of the municipality is to spend that money for the good of the community. So we need to actually sign or commit these fund balances so that it doesn't look like we're, we're, you know, creating this massive balance. We've had to, in negotiations with the union, we've had them look at that and say, well, you can't tell us, you know, that, that we can't get bonuses and raises and everything else. That's twelve million dollars, isn't it? It's not really the case. So per the auditor, we should commit those funds. We laid out some examples of where our staff has thought we could commit them. And just, I just want to say, this is done by resolution. And we, we commit them, their funds to those, to those items. But should emergency come up or should council decide down the road that there is another project that they really want to work for, we can by resolution, commit down to that new project. I don't know, Cheryl, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, while she's, while she's thinking, Mike, one of the things that I read into the information that was passed on to us, it said that by the end of the year, that council just needs to make a commitment to commit those funds, that we can actually take it into the first part of the year, if necessary, to actually make those designations for those commitments, for the, for the commitment. Am I correct?
I'm sorry. Okay, say that again.
Well, according, according to the information that you gave us, it, that I read is it said that we have to just make a commitment to say we are going to commit this rainy day fund and have a resolution on that, I guess, is what it would be. And then after the first of the year that we could actually, or before, however it works out. But it could even go into the next year. Uh, but it could even go into the next year to actually make those actual commitments to say, you know, fifty thousand there, a hundred thousand there. You know, two different eye line items. However, it could change at, upon, uh, councils and the city's needs. And, and is that correct?
That's correct, but we're, we, just to be clear, we can't just commit them as rainy day funds that have to be very specific.
That's true. But, uh, what I'm saying is that we just have to, by the end of the year, we have to designate to say that we are making a commitment for the rainy day fund that we have. But then what we actually commit to could be done either before the end of the year or after the first of the year, according to what I read.
So Mayor, it's, we've been, we've had this rainy day fund out there for, uh, a little bit. Um, and yeah, we, we should make a commitment before the end of the year is what I'm thinking. Um, for next year's audit and such. And right now we have an unassigned fund balance of twelve million, two hundred thirteen thousand. That's where everybody is seeing that, that number saying, well, the city's, you know, importing money and not spending it toward, uh, toward the city uses. So, um, with our proposed commitment for, uh, seven million of that is already out there. It's compensated absences for one million. The Eagle Rock subdivision is funding for, I think we explained it, uh, last week. This is for the failed, uh, Eagle Rock subdivision. It's three hundred thousand. Those, uh, are committed. The fleet, five hundred thousand. But the remaining amount is five million, four hundred thirteen thousand. It's, uh, uh, that needs to be committed. And staff kind of threw some, uh, some ideas out there. The wa- a second water treatment plant, the low trend that life has always been part of that, uh, we could commit it to that. Now what that means, that doesn't necessarily mean you're, you have to do that, but that's committing that for that process. The same with the, uh, covered swimming pool. That's come up in more than one, uh, survey that's been sent out to the community to cover the swimming pool. Uh, we estimate that cost to be about six million. Um, if we, we did that, we don't, you know, if that would be that. And then of course streets, uh, just main street alone up here from Animas to basically Santa Fe Trail. We're estimating that cost to be two million. San Pedro, which is one of our, uh, brick streets, uh, that is in, uh, horrible disrepair. If we did that, that's estimated to be seven million. So I think we need to commit these funds to, I mean, these are source specific, the general. That way we can, uh, assign, um, assign them, like commit them down the road to other projects. I, I, I'll shut up.
Well, I, I, I think it would be good for, you know, council to be able to, uh, maybe not tonight, uh, unless they want to, to make, uh, or to go back home and, and think about maybe some projects that I have a couple of them that, uh, I have in mind, uh, for some of it. Uh, but I think council needs to have some input there for some of particular projects. Council, uh, you wanna weigh in on that, please?
I, I'd like to.
Okay.
I'll jump in instead of wave my hand, but, uh, sorry Karen. Um, I think it's important for us to, uh, to remember we can commit these to projects and stuff we wanna, we want to do. But in the case of an emergency, doing ordinance, if we have to pull this money back, uh, pull money out for COVID or anything else, we still would be able to do that in the case of an emergency, correct?
That's correct.
Alright.
Karen, did you have your hand?
Sorry, I, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm having audio difficulties here. I'm using my cell phone. Um, so I'm, I'm thinking, you know, with Cheryl's gonna get us, is going to give us, provide to us the actual cash balances of lots of water funds and all of those. If we knew what that was, then we could better determine what this surplus could be used for. For instance, when staff mentioned, uh, a second water treatment plant, which I think is a, a great idea. So I'm af- I'm asking more than anything, can we use part of the water funds and part of these funds for a second water treatment fund? Can we? So, you know, and, and, okay. And, and when we're talking about, you know, the project that staff kind of, uh, mentioned to us, I think that main street, those two or three blocks of West Main Street would probably be good because it doesn't seem like the project would be extremely expensive, but we could try it. And I have another question for staff too. We were talking when, uh, about economic development within the city. Some projects that are, are more, are essential to making Trinidad more attractive for people to move here. My thinking is, can we use some of that money to, uh, enlist it as an economic development fund? Where I'd say for instance, a business asks for, uh, leniency of permits or utility bookups. Instead of those funds taking the hit on that, if we could use that money to try and, and, uh, increase the, uh, economic development of the community. Uh, it was just something that, you know, we talked about the other day last week. So I'm just thinking maybe, could, can we do that? Can we list these funds as an economic development and do it that way?
You know, this, this particular question, it's raising some questions, I think, on each one of us. And, uh, um, you know, most of us, I'm not sure how many of us do have a one-on-one with Mike. And, uh, maybe it's a good thing that, uh, maybe that would be a good time to maybe get with Mike on our one-on-ones to give him our ideas. And then he could, uh, you know, consolidate it, bring it back to council or take it to the directors and see what their thoughts are. And then bring it as a proposal to us. Uh.
Okay.
That, that, that might be one way to do it. Any thoughts?
I like that idea, Mayor, versus White, right?
Okay, I think that would be good. Uh, Ms. Ogletree, you got your hand raised?
You're muted. Sorry.
Alright, um, I like Karen's idea about having a dedicated economic development fund to address different things. One of the things that's come up recently is the need for some kind of a traffic study. Uh, as we're gonna get increased, uh, visitors with the park. Um, we really need to focus in on that and figure out the appropriate way traffic should flow along Trinidad. And that might direct, uh, what's streets we should focus on in terms of improvements. And that's, that's something that we should put a high priority first to address.
You know, I, I think you're right. And, you know, Ms. Gregor is, is correct. You know, I, I think looking at the, uh, the fund, especially the, the fund balance that we have from the, from the marijuana fund, uh, is what, taking that, whatever fund balance that is, uh, and using that to get the biggest bang for our buck. Uh, in that particular one. The other fund balances, we can look at those, maybe kind of separate those. Uh, that might be, uh, a way to look at it as well. And that way we know we have X for, uh, miscellaneous projects. And then maybe other, the other funds for other type of projects, uh, major projects. So, uh, that's why I say it might, like, I mentioned, to bring our ideas to, uh, Mr. Valentine. And then, uh, he and staff could work, probably, uh, come up with a recommendation for us.
Yep, yeah. I would defer to that, Mayor, just because, um, some of these items I don't think fit the committed fund balance. The, the, um, federal fund reserves, uh, so we would, I would take all the ideas. Staff would take a look at them, uh, and if we had to consult with our auditor to make sure. Um, cause in the end, uh, he's the, he's definitely the one that suggested, uh, we do this. So, um, yep.
And if I may, just, we have to be very specific. So just saying economic development, it's not much different than a rainy day fund. But if you say economic development, traffic study, then it's specific.
Right.
So we just want to be real clear about that.
Yeah. That's why I think, that's why I mentioned it, uh, because it's going to take some, some pretty good thought to, to make sure that we have, have everything in the right place. So that we don't get our auditor to say, you didn't do it right next year. So I think we, I think we can do, we'll get this done. Uh, anything else on that? Yes?
Yeah, I have one more. So are we fully funded and taken care of on Noah's Ark and the Space Decree project?
Fully funded on, on Noah's Ark, I believe. We are there with Noah's Ark, uh, you know, barring any, we're seeing, uh, incidents. But Space Decree project, uh, no, we are not. Uh, we have now a bid packet, uh, complete that Wally is going through. I started looking at it today. Um, I don't believe we're fully funded yet, but, uh.
It, it would be missed in if we're gonna allocate this money to make sure both them projects are a hundred percent done and completed and, and laid to rest. Also, I think would be a good place for some of this money if we're gonna.
No, I agree that we finish it up and move on with something, uh, something else that's gonna help us out. Okay, if there's, uh, other questions, uh, you know, on to the, uh, the fun one here. Our murals. I think that's something that, that council has been working on for some time. So, uh, you wanna take that on?
Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. So Mayor, Council members, I hope you, um, saw my memo, my, uh, supporting materials with my memo. I, I just wanna kind of, you know, go over my memo briefly and, uh, and, and touch on a few points before I have you ask questions or comments regarding this. I, I just wanna be in, like I was saying, that a mural ordinance, a mural policy. Boy, it looks like people jumped off as soon as, where did they go? Where? No, but I'm sorry. So the, the mural policy is in his, uh, is memorialized in a mural ordinance. There, there are four basic things. And number one is the, um, application process. One application is to, to contain where it gets filed, um, and the requirements with respect to, uh, the application process. The next one is, once there is a completed and satisfactory mural application, what's the procedure for the mural coming out? That is, we have the ordinance, um, but, but we have the mural application. Where does the mural application go once it is filed and accepted, uh, by city staff? I mean, the offices you designate in terms of where a mural application should be filed, um, with respect to that. The next one is, um, requirements for a mural physically. And I think that would, uh, that, that's one of the reasons why I think a mural ordinance could be in the sign code. It also should involve as part of the procedure, part of the process, planning and zoning, uh, to make sure that whatever physical requirements you require them, um, with, with respect to the dimensions, the size, uh, allowable placement, things of that nature, that it meets all those things, um, in the sign code. But the, uh, the physical requirements with respect to size of a mural. The last one is, um, content and what you can and cannot do. And that's the big, I think that's the one that everybody wants to talk about. And I just will say on that is I was, you know, back when I was ju- just thinking about this before I really started trying to putting this together, I was thinking, I think everybody else is thinking, that we were going to have to have a conversation of art, what is good art, what is bad art? How are you going to get that in an ordinance? And I want to emphasize to you that none of that needs to be discussed. None of that should be discussed. And this last fourth subject category, I just want to emphasize what you can do, what you need to do is, you can have prohibition, you should have prohibition. That is, um, mural shall not advertise for goods and services for the business within. Shall not advertise for goods and services without, you know, someplace else. That would make it the equivalent of a, of a building. Um, should not have, you know, all the things that we can regulate constitutionally. No hate speech, incitement to riot, uh, racially invidious or discriminatory, um, language. Um, all those kinds of things. A- again, that goes in the category of what you should not have. Um, but then the one thing you can do and the one thing you can regulate, you are allowed to, that is objective, not subjective. That is a matter of control standards rather than trying to decide upon what is acceptable art. And that is design guidelines. What a mural should, um, what the, the professional standards, quality of, of work, quality of product. Um, and, and also, like the Solida Code says, does it fit in with the overall community aesthetic? And that is kind of an area where you can regulate. Again, I don't want to tell you that you're gonna be able to delve into the subjective area. But does it, the, the mural application, does it fit? Does it look good? And it is part of the application process. You should be given a diagram of the proposed mural and what it looks like, where it would go on the building, who the mural artist would be. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna backtrack from, from point one. But anyway, the, how it fits in with the historic nature of the, the area. Um, how, how it blends or how it, uh, maybe makes a, a historical statement. Those are things that can be in the design guideline portion of the ordinance. And, and this I think is my last point before I field opponents' questions. And that is, a lot of the, a lot of the communities that have mural ordinances, and there are a lot that don't, but a lot of them that do delegate to various city staff or city commissions in terms of who approves a mural, uh, a mural proposal or a mural application. I think that in this case it should be city council, and I think you want it to be city council. So you have the mural application process, you have the procedure. And, and my last point on that is, and that is, I think you should involve boards like, um, Arts and Culture and Historic Preservation after the application process is complete for a non-binding recommendation of city council from those boards. Involve planning and zoning to give the equivalent of a signed permit if an application passes muster, um, you know, with the physical components, but involve those as part of the procedure going forward. And then you have the things that a mural should not do. And eventually you have a completed application, uh, in, in presentation for a mural application that would be presented before city council. And that is, yeah, okay.
Uh, one thing I was gonna say is, you know, I, I read through the information and as much of those case things that came up. Uh, there was a couple in there that were pretty interesting. And, uh, it sounds like, uh, in, in some sense that, uh, a mural thing can be a slippery slope. Um, you gotta be very careful, you know, and what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, at this point, defer and start with Ms. Ogletree because of her background. Uh, I'm sure she has been able to, uh, dissect some of this information uh, and kind of maybe guide us a little bit along with your guidance. Uh, I'm sure she has been able to dissect some of this information, uh, and kinda maybe guide us a little bit, along with your guidance, council, to let us know. So, Ms. Ogletree, uh, I'm pick on you first.
Well, thank you, unfortunately, I'm no expert on murals, um, have no background in this, I spent several hours going through, excuse me, classes materials over the weekend, and I found it all very interesting. And I brought up a few things with, with him, uh, that I kinda caught, that we have some conflicts in, in our sign code that, you know, say a sign is not a work of art, and so we have to figure out if we're gonna fit it in there just to catch the ways that it will, um, work together with the rest of the sign code, but I think putting it in the sign code is probably the best idea, rather than having a whole separate part of the land use code that, that deals with murals. It, it makes it a lot more businesslike in terms of the way that we're going to review, review it. I, I think it is gonna be really critical that we have people on whoever the board is, who, uh, that is gonna be looking at the aesthetics, that, who, who are experienced, uh, artists and know how to judge what is professional work, what is professional materials. We really need some expertise there, um, and who they even are going to be willing to accept murals from. The way I'm seeing this is that we could have a lot of people coming up and saying, "I would print, I wanna do a mural, and I've never done this before, but, heck, I wanna give it a try," and so that's gonna be, you know, we're gonna need to have people who can say, "Well, you really have to be a professional muralist to do this," is what it seemed like to me in the way we're thinking. So, I think it, it's gonna be probably something we'll learn as we go, and we're gonna try to avoid, uh, making mistakes and stepping on toes, but it's gonna be tough.
Uh, you know, one of the things, the reason why I wanted you to go first is 'cause, you know, the, the question arose in every one of those cases, uh, was, you know, the freedom, freedom of speech, and, uh, that seems to be the, probably the, the major, the major issue within any of these cases that, that came before, whether it's a Supreme Court, state Supreme Court, appeals courts, that seems to be the, uh, area that I think that, uh, is, you gotta be very careful with, and that's why I wanted you to chime in on it first, to see if you had any thought on, there's some of the legalities of this stuff.
Certainly, um, that's true, and again, I'm no First Amendment expert in any situation performed. And as I read through the Reed versus Talbot Gilbert case, I tended to, to agree with the concurring, um, the, the concurring opinions toward the end. I thought they reached the right result, but I thought that the way that it came down was likely to be confusing with regards to content, based restrictions, um, on signs, and I, it just seemed like they kinda overdid it. But, we're stuck with the, the majority, so, so, yeah, yeah, I think this is something that, when we are putting this together and we have the wording together, it would be, it would be a good idea for us to have somebody, well, I don't know whether Serso reviews those kind of things for us, but somebody to people look at it and less to say, "This looks like it conforms, um, you know, here's some things you might wanna change."
Okay, let's, uh, start with some questions, uh, Mr. DeBono.
Yes, uh, Les, uh, here, maybe you could answer this for me, a lot of towns have the ordinances for murals, but most of the, most of them are hand painted or hand tiled, but now with the advent of technology, a lot of people are using digitally, digital printed images on the exterior of the walls, but like Les said, with, without any, uh, commercial message. So is that, I mean, is that acceptable, the digital printed images on the walls?
I... Go ahead, Les.
Well, as soon as I think it could be, it's up to you, I, I think that it's not, it's not what I had in mind, that's not very persuasive. Having a large digital reproduction on a wall, now, one of the things we talked about too is that, a lot of murals could be like on a surface that, that is affixed to a wall, and so, but, but I, and I know it's not directly responsive to your question, councilman, but, um, I would say that would be up to you, you could do that, but I, uh, I, I'm thinking more along the lines of, I, I mean, that, and I'm sorry if I offend anyone, but that doesn't really strike me as much of a, a work of art as does a painting or a mosaic, like you say, a tile kind of thing.
Hand tiled.
Right, exactly, Councilwoman Ogletree, what are your thoughts?
I was thinking, um, it's possible something like that could be done on a temporary basement basis, I bet you there are, um, temporary murals that people project on the walls, and so we probably need to take that into account too, um, so, that's what I have to offer.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think that, I, I think it's, you know, it's great that you're thinking of those things that are outside of what we normally expect and presume will be presented to us.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
So, could we create a scenario similar to like a contractor where they have to come in and get a license to be able to do the mural? That way we could kind of limit the, or manage the people that will be doing the mur- murals more as a professional, uh, have some kind of requirement or background in that to receive a license? And, uh, do it, do it that way to help control who's putting the murals up?
Well, I, I had not given that any thought, I, I think that, um, I, I mean, I don't know if our mural artists or muralists would be okay with the notion of having to get a license, um, from the city, where, and then, I'm just trying to think this word, like, you know, if you have a, a good artist, who applies with the city for a, a mural license and they're rejected, and I, I don't know, I, it's a thought, but I, I do think that the rendering that would be submitted on the initial application, um, would, would indicate, you know, would give, would give everyone a, a sense of, of how quality the, the application was, but, I don't know, councilman, that's a, that's a good question, and I, I think it's something we could think about, I, I think a lot of people would, would kinda have heartburn over that, but it doesn't mean it's not a, a, a good idea.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Uh, Ms. Ogletree, have you come up with anything else?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm hearing what everybody else is thinking.
Okay, Ms. Gregel?
Okay, so, I think the mayor and Rusty and I have a little bit more, uh, experience in this, with this issue because it was brought up, I think, before the new council
Yeah.
took office, I can't remember, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm even, I'm not getting, my concern is not even the artistic quality or that type of question, my question is, and my, my concerns are very simple. First of all, my, my first and foremost concern is I do not want anything to jeopardize the Corazon, the Trinidadian's dark area. That's one concern, I don't want, I don't want the regulation to be so cumbersome that it will pretty much kill any mural that we're gonna have. I'm sorry I'm in the dark, but Eddie made me go to the porch because I was making too much noise, I'm sorry. I, I'm concerned because there's, historically in Trinidad, when there's been any kind of project downtown, they're good for a while and nobody, then nobody maintains it. And I'm, I'm concerned about maintenance on, on these murals, there has to be some type of regulation or guideline that if it's desecrated or, or has graffiti on it, that somebody needs to take care of that right away. Just very simple things, um, you know, I, I'm not even thinking about artistic qualities or whatever, I just, I, I don't want people to think that this council is opposed to murals, but I, we have a duty to maintain the beauty of downtown Trinidad, and that's a very, you talk about a slippery slope, that's a very slippery slope. 'Cause I, it's not my intent to hinder anybody's, uh, artistic rendering, and that, I'm good.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Shu, I, I haven't, I haven't heard, is Mr. Shu on? I don't think he's connected tonight, are you?
He's not here, Mayor.
Okay.
I think he's not here.
Okay, Mr. Williamson?
Um, first off, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for all the work that was done on this, it's a really expansive document and just a lot of supporting, um, supporting documents in it, and I think it's important that we're looking to other places that have done this and see what worked and what did not, and that'll eliminate a lot of issues right out of the box. Councilwoman Gregel brought up a lot of great points, um, but that's my main thing, is, um, I think we probably should address those issues as well, and just, uh, say thank you for the work that was done, it's expansive, and I think this is good to be moving forward on this point, so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that, and I, I want you to know I've had a lot of help, and I'm sorry this is taking so long on this. The, the delay was my psychological block about, yeah, anyway, I, I just, but thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, I do have a, a few, you know, questions, and, you know, of course, Ms. Gregel, you did bring up some concerns. But I, I think the number one thing that we need to do is find out is our, this mural code or whatever we're gonna have, to make sure that it is also adopted in our sign code, I think that's one, the big thing that we need to make sure of. 'Cause it sounds like, uh, in, in what happened with that Mahoney versus Inglewood, uh, 'cause they were, some of the issues, uh, surrounded, uh, the, the sign code that they had, and, uh, there was a denial or something partially because of the, the, the sign code. My questions, and like Ms. Gregel there, uh, my question there is, okay, who, when it's painted, or however it's in, who owns the mural? In the event that, like I said, desecrated or needs fixing, who's responsible? And for how long is that responsibility? I think that's something that we need to, to, to address. Big thing, like I said, is who decides what, what is art, you know, that's not for us to decide, 'cause, uh, I know I don't have the expertise, and I'm not sure if anybody else on council has, uh, you know, do we need a, uh, within the arts and culture, do they have, can we create, uh, or a subculture or, or something from there for them to be able to come up with an art advisory group? Which I think, uh, that was one, uh, city that did that, uh, that could be something that, uh, could be incorporated as well. It could be like, that would, they would be like the sign review committee. The other thing that came up, I think, in one of the issues, was the timeframe for approving an application, that if we don't have that in place, that could be a slippery slope as well. 'Cause that was thrown out because it was, it was not in place, or because it didn't follow the guideline of, uh, how long it took to approve a, uh, an application, uh, I saw that as well. One thing that I don't really, would really do know, 'cause they're talking in there about, uh, you know, if you're going down and you see all this, a mural that's changing every thirty seconds or whatever, uh, you know, does it cause a traffic issue? So I'm a little concerned about having, uh, murals that are maybe digital, that on a, on a wall, that's, that's changing. And, uh, it could, I think it could, it could cause, and is that really truly art? I, I don't know for sure, and I'd say, I'm not an artist in that regard. I picked a paintbrush or two in my life, but I can regard myself as a, as an artist. I was more of a smudger, I guess you could say. Uh, let me think here, I saw something else I had written down. Bear with me. One thing is, on, uh, this was on criteria for mural, mural location on a building, content, prohibitions. On items, past item seven, talks about, for instance, the minor memorial, uh, wall that you were talking about, that if a, where you're talking about having a percentage of a wall that could be used for, for a mural. And I think that we've got to probably stick with that and not go allow somebody to have a much larger mur- mural, because then it starts to set a precedence. And if somebody else comes up and says, you know, "Why did you allow this?" why, you know, and maybe deny us, so I think we gotta be careful, uh, with that. There, you know, there was something else that I, I thought of this, you know, we are a historical community, and we have had, uh, I'll give you a good example, look what happened at Ludlow, and of course, if, you know, there was some issue back, uh, with that Ludlow massacre. And let's say somebody wanted to paint a historical thing on, let's say, the Ludlow massacre, of some of the bad things of the shootings and the killings and all that stuff, and so, how does that fit in to say that, um, it, it creates an issue of a protest or something like that, I, I don't know. So I think that, uh, would, if somebody would come forward with something like that, what kind of consideration would we need to give?
May I step aside?
Sure, go ahead.
Can you tell those please? Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, the first thing is that, what I'm talking about is you can certainly have a rule, uh, or a requirement that, that a mural doesn't exceed a certain size. I'm just saying that for good cause, there should be a, an avenue for people to try to petition for an exception to that rule. So that there's a really good example, a really good situation where somebody goes to exceed the normal, uh, size requirements that you have, and it's otherwise permissible, I, I think that that should be allowed, you wouldn't be setting a precedent, you just say, you know, like in this instance, we wanted to have a, a mural, the entire, you know, all the coal cans along the highway of Ludlow, it's ended up, it's what Mike Romero has talked about, I think that's a stellar idea, and I think it would be a damn shame to limit him to like two hundred, you know, no, whatever, it's just some small percentage of, of that wall, uh, with, with respect to that. Also, I'd like to say that art, and, and there were, there were a couple of, uh, a couple of times who was commenting, commenting on that, we should have an art advisor, a commission, we should have something like that, but it's good art, and that's exactly what I'm trying to stay away from. Not a, no commission or new commission, that's what they talk about art, not as good art. And also, again, have a recommendation, people, you know, on arts and culture think that it's a, a, a high quality art project, but not try to say if, if something is art that they like or, or that they, they don't like. Also, I think art, and again, I'm trying to steer you away from this, but art can be controversial. And I know that those paintings that we bought, I'm, I'm forgetting the artist's name, but we bought a number of paintings that are in the Ludlow Miners Museum, and those, those are beautiful and they're haunting, and they're, I, I mean, I, I just think that it would be unfortunate if someone or a commissioner or group tried to edit those and tried to say, "Those are not okay, because I don't like the message that it sends," um, for, for whatever reason. A, a couple of last words, they're absolutely asking for consideration. The Mahoney case wasn't indeed struck down, because the city manager did not have requirements in terms of how long he had, uh, in terms of acting on a mural, so city managers, uh, per view to act on a mural application, he didn't, and that's one of the reasons the mayor's absolutely right, one of the reasons why the Inglewood Code in two thousand and nine was thrown out in strict. Um, I would say that, I don't think we're gonna say that as soon as your application gets here, you will have a decision within ninety days. It's like anything else, it's like a marijuana retail store license application, we will act on it, and we will have it go through the process, and there will be no, um, having a mural application languishing or, um, or not going through. I, and then, I think we could absolutely have, you know, who are responsible for, uh, for the art book. I think artists are going to assert their desire to be responsible for I think artists are going to assert their desire to be responsible for the, the art. A lot of the case law that we have, that we're not even talking about yet, like that Ms. Riley submitted to council, a lot of that case law is artists wanting to be responsible for their murals and wanting, you know, not to have people take pictures of the murals or use their likeness without their permission, uh, not have people alter their original artwork, and, and not do many things along those lines. That doesn't really affect us, that's between the artist and the, the landlord in terms of what happens. But I think it's a good idea as part of the application process to have who is going to be the responsible party, if in fact any artwork is defaced, altered, uh, or to maintain if it's still suffering normal wear and tear. But I, I think that's all I have in terms of-
Okay.
The, the council comments, and any other questions?
The, the only other comment I had, and of course you said in, on the last paragraph of your information, is that staff hasn't had a tad really time to weigh in on, on the memo. And I, I think that maybe, uh, we need to give them a little bit of time before we probably bring this forward as an actual ordinance. Uh, what are, what is coun, what are council's thoughts, or what's council's thoughts there? Do you think we need to give them some time to review? Mr. DeBono?
Phil Lips, I was just gonna ask you, uh, I'm assuming that some of the businesses that had murals or grandfathered in, right? Like the Los Angeles Grill, who's his- blades, two murals, one on the west-
That's absolutely correct, the, uh, a, a number of those murals that exist are from Art Bridge, Augsburg. We also, we have a prohibition on any new murals on contributing buildings in the historic, uh, preservation district. But so, but that cannot be done, and that was something that you, the council considered previously. And by the way, I know that Ms. Clark is out there, if any of you would like to hear from, from George, I, I just wanted to, but, but yes, thank the council, DeBono.
Okay. Well, I think that, uh, does, anybody else on council, uh, have any other questions?
Uh, Les-
Go ahead.
The moratorium that's in place right now, though, it's all, all murals, it's not just in the, the historic, there's, there's no murals right now, until we have-
That's correct, that's absolutely correct. There's a prohibition, the contributing buildings in the HP, that's, that's a prohibition, but you're absolutely right. And you, that's correct, Councilman Ogletree, there is a moratorium, um, on murals while council considers this mural ordinance.
So what we're proposing is to come up with a mural policy that would permit murals anywhere but in those, on those contributing buildings in the historic district, correct? So throughout-
Yes, ma'am.
This would-
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. This, this would be, you know, kind of applied and instituted right as the, uh, right as the, uh, moratorium stigma removes simultaneously. So the people could, under the, with these regulations, apply for a mural?
I, I think, um, the mayor's comment about, uh, staff comment is gonna be really important, because they're gonna need to weigh in on how this can be done the most efficient way. And then I, I think we do need to look, though, at who is on, um, the commissions that we're going to cast to review these things and make sure that they are people who can evaluate, um, the professional, uh, professionalism of the artist or the work or that kind of stuff. So there's some objective standard they're applying.
And that is why I made the recommendations that I did, uh, regarding, uh, I believe it's arts and culture and the historic preservation division, and of course, there's always plenty of consulting. I think a number of boards and commissions are going to want to be involved, and, um, I-
I think the creative district might want to as well, they may be interested in that.
But I'll, I'll steer clear of a recommendation, you, you guys will do what you wanna do.
Well, one of the things that, that my concern is, you know, we get too many boards and commissions, uh, you know, advising, uh, you know, we could have a heck of a mess on our hands, and I think that, uh, the arts and cultures, whenever they have a new person that applies, to, and so they would be, I feel, they should be the advisory group. And, uh, should have qualified people to be able to, to help judge, or to, just, you know, to give us some recommendations. Uh, so I really believe that that is probably the, the starting, would maybe one of the main starting points. Um, so, uh, those are my thoughts.
Mayor?
Yes?
May I make, may I make a suggestion, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
I'm kind of disabled here. Uh, I think maybe there's two aspects to murals. Arts and culture should be involved when you're talking about the art. What, what the applicant has come up with as far as the art is concerned. But I do, do believe planning and zoning needs to be, um, involved as well. For the logistics, the very simple requirements as far as placement, size, and things like that. I think if we get those two boards on board, I think that might be, because there's two aspects of murals, you know? So I'm thinking those two would probably be a good idea.
Okay.
And we heard from Councilman Goodall.
I was fixing to jump in, Mr. Downs.
All right, sure, I, you know, you-
Go ahead.
I, I think it's important when we were, I think it's important, from whatever boards or commissions that we bring in, that we have a strict set of guidelines that they can go by.
Sure.
Good point.
I have any personal opinions on content via, uh, guidelines for them to judge whatever comes in front of them. And I also believe it's important that we get, um, staff's opinion on how this should be implemented, and that should weigh into our decision on this.
Uh, Rusty, I, I'm in agreement with you on the first part of that, because what it does is if we have a specific set of guidelines that they have to follow, it rules out, uh, automatically, any personal opinions that they might have.
And I wanted to say too, that I earlier said, you know, you've been able to hear from Ms. Clark, and I know she's on, but, Mr. Wallace is also on, Ms. Garrett, and they have been, uh, very involved in this thing, Mr. Valentine. Anything that they would like to contribute, I didn't mean to only emphasize Ms. Clark. She said her black screen is waiting, you wanna be?
Well, let's go ahead and ask them, Ms., Ms., Ms. Clark, do you have anything that you'd like to add? Okay, can't, can't hear you, Ms. Clark. Let's go on, Wally, are you on?
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Um, I, I would not have as much to add for the actual information of like the permitting process and stuff like that. Um, I would emphasize that I agree we shouldn't get too many boards involved with everything, because that can take a month for one of the boards to have a meeting and-
Yep.
Stuff like that, one may reject something and have to make you go back to the other one. So I do agree, arts and culture and planning and zoning would be my two picks, uh, with you all having overall say in the end. Um, last thing is, I, I do agree that there can be some sort of process to like judging the artistic abilities of the muralists. But if we do that route, then I think that we need to also have some sort of exemption for like students who are art students who may not have the background to show that they have done a lot of this in the past, but with the oversight of somebody who has. Um, and I just think that we do wanna establish a way for, uh, up and coming artists to be able to contribute to this and build a portfolio for themselves. And I think it'd be too bad to neglect the potential of up, up and coming younger artists who wanna create something for this town. So, that, that's my endpoint in this so far. Um, and, and I'll also add, I, I, I'm glad that you all are talking about it, and I do agree that, uh, there's no reason to rush it at this point. At this, like, it's ten degrees outside right now, and I don't think that mural season is coming up. Um, but it'd be good to have this planned out before that does start becoming something people wanna be moving forward on. So no huge rush, but I'm glad we're talking about it.
Uh, Wally, I, I do have a, a suggestion, of course, to your suggestion, uh, about students, and I think that if a student wanted to do it, I think that we would have to make sure that they had guidance of maybe a professional that's done it.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Garrett, did you have, did you have any comment?
I need to say, we don't wanna have too many boards considering the murals. I, when you start layering, um, one board on top of another, and they're, they're looking at the same criteria, that's what they're likely shocked and reject that criteria as well. So, when you're not judging, um, content of the actual mural, and you can't say whether you like the art or you don't like the art, I think we can consider one board, and that's it. I think too many is, is gonna make it very difficult and time consuming and it'll be laborious to the public, those artists are gonna say, we're only getting gifts coming out for one way or another.
And you know, we might be able to, uh, narrow it down to even a single board if the historical preservation group would put forth maybe some guidelines that they would like to see followed, and then give them, give that information, you know, to us, and then we could pass that down to, let's say if arts and culture is just going to be the advisory, uh, board or commission, that way it goes to, they have, like Mr. Goodall said earlier, they have a, a strict set of guidelines, and that way they don't have to be bouncing back and forth and trying to fine tune everything. This way they have a strict set of guidelines to follow, and could be got done through maybe one board, and that's it. Uh, Georgie, did, are you still on? No. Uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have any comment?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I was hoping you would forget about me.
No such luck.
Thirty, thirty some years, uh, of, of working for the city, the most stressful and controversial over art, so I'm glad Les is going to, to this with, with not judging art. But, um, I agree with pretty much all that's been said. The one thing I, I have to say is keep it to, you know, one or two boards and, and staff, and have the criteria laid out so that it's, it's not subjective to, I don't like this art. If it meets the criteria, then, 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 then it meets the criteria. And, uh, the public process might, you know, be, uh, important so that those, uh, who have their, can have their say with whatever is, is going on. I, I, um, I think that would happen in, in planning commission, uh, since they're the quasi judicial board, but, yeah. And then it's a number of, uh, of boards and people who look at this.
And I'll go back to my last, uh, con, my, my last comment about, uh, you know, the, the historical preservation or, uh, board that they put together, some guidelines, and we narrow it down to one board that will make that decision. That way it makes the process a lot easier and a lot quicker.
If I could, please, Mayor, right?
Sure.
I just think there are different things that different boards and commissions do, the different places they would look at it, and what I was kind of thinking is, I, I think Art Report is a very good one. You don't wanna get, you know, too many people involved and doing that. But if, once we had an application that was acceptable, let's say it's filed in the city clerk's office and everything is submitted, then it could go out to the various boards and commissions or action by them at their next regular, schedule, at their next regular scheduled meeting. And then, you know, for the ones that make a nonminding recommendation, maybe that, I mean, I mean, and I know it's easier to step it down. I mean, some boards and commissions could like not be able to meet that move. So I, I know that is, again, easier to step it down. I do want to say that Ms. Clark sent me a text, she said she doesn't know why, uh, she is unmuted, that she hears everything, that she's not able to unmute, and she's apologizing.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any other comments? If not, we'll go on to our next, uh, item. Okay, uh, item four, discussion of other items, uh, that people or council would like to bring up in the future. Uh, starting with Mr. DeBono, do you have anything that you'd like to see?
No, not right now, Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay, Mr. Goodall? None?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Ogletree?
I've just been hearing that there may be some monies that are available to the city to do Riverwalk improvements. So I think we should maybe have a work session to talk about, uh, the Riverwalk and improving it, and, and what monies out there that we could, could get to do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think you and I have the same thoughts there, so we'll, okay. Uh, Ms. Gregel?
I, I would like to talk about, uh, when Mike and, and Councilwoman Ogletree and I went and talked to the code enforcement officer, they gave us a, a few suggestions. And I know it's been mentioned several times before, but I think we really need to look over our, uh, codes for, uh, maintenance of properties, and I think we need to put some more bite in that.
Okay.
And start eliminating a lot of screw ups that some problems for the owners are getting with their properties.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Williamson?
I have nothing at this point.
Okay. Uh, the, the one thing I wanted to bring up tonight from my end is that, uh, I have been, you know, mentioning in the past, uh, with everything that's going on with Fisher's Peak and these, uh, space to create, and, uh, recently, you know, we had a discussion with someone on the river. Uh, there's some stuff out there, and we're, we're really, um, making some headway into being noticed across the, the state here and all over. And, uh, you know, I've mentioned in the past about being community ready. And I've been thinking about this, and I said, what does that actually mean? Uh, you know, there is money that, for instance, we have a grant out there that we've applied, that's been applied for, for, uh, a study, for the infrastructure going to Fisher's Peak, uh, maybe, uh, how, how that's going to help us economically, uh, that type of stuff. But we really don't have anything that, uh, we can pinpoint and say, what does community ready really mean? And what should it mean? So I'd like to propose, and we could bring this up if you have, I would, you know, Mrs. Ogletree has been to some of the meetings that I've been to. And, uh, if council doesn't have any, uh, issues with it, I would like her to maybe lead something, and I could talk to her a little bit more about, uh, a direction of what does community ready mean? And maybe she can get, uh, one or two other people in, from the city, or, not, uh, in, it, it doesn't have to be where there's gonna be, you know, ten or twenty meetings, I think just two or three meetings where she could sit down with a few people, uh, maybe four or five people, and say, what does community ready mean to us? And what does it mean to, to the city of Trinidad? Uh, and even include, uh, possibly maybe somebody from the county, because the county is included in this, so. Uh, I, I just feel like we need to address that. Uh, does, can anybody on council have any reservations about something like that? Mr. D-
I have- I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It's, okay, um, I think we need some input. You and I talked about that to Mayor several weeks ago.
Yes.
And I think it's, it's part of getting people to understand that they need to have pride in our community. You know, somebody told me years ago when we were at meetings that, when you invite people over, you clean your house first. And I think that's what we need to, um, concentrate on, uh, talking about community pride, and I think Eric Aaron would be a, a good selection for that. But I think we need to ask for public input.
Okay.
What it, what does, then, you know, what, what, what areas do we need improvement on, especially downtown?
Okay. It's a good thought. Any other, any other comments? Let's try, Mr. DeBono, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
I mean, community preparedness, or, um, during COVID, post-COVID, uh, you know, it's, it's gonna be different.
Mm-hmm.
Preparedness, how we look at this now as to when it goes away and things open back up. So I think that'll throw a little bit of a- So I think that'll throw a little bit of a, I don't know, not not say a monkey wrench, but maybe a different opinion from a lot of people on this.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a good discussion to have, and I think it's gonna be, um, the opinions we may get now may be a totally different opinion after COVID.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, and like I said, you know, Ms. Ogletree, Mr. Williamson, do you have any, any comments?
I have none, Mayor.
Okay, well, Ms. Ogletree, you know, if you're willing to take that on, you can pick and choose whoever you would like to have help you. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about it, and then we go for it and see what you can do with it, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, I I'd like to set up a time to talk with you about a little bit more
Okay.
and what your thoughts are.
Okay, we can do it, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a ring and and we can talk, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other thoughts? Okay.
Mayor, I mean, um, just to let council know, probably the next work session will be discussing uh third quarter marijuana fund allocations, and then uh, I just, this is more of a public announcement with the recent rash of uh COVID cases and and it spiked up all of our uh, our metrics. Uh, there is freak testing going on, of course, they canceled because of the snow, but the idea there is to, the more take uh negatives we have, it uh, it drives our metric percentage down. Um, so if if you get the word out to be tested, uh, it's a fourteen day window. Since October fourth, and this is old data now, I think we've had a couple more cases, we had forty cases. So, uh, with the state's uh new metrics, and there are levels of safer home, one, two, and three. Uh, we were at one, all those cases bumped us up into three. Um, in the sense that she got contacted by the state. Um, and so she has to prove up that we have mitigation in pro, in process, so.
Okay.
Um, the testing is part of that, um, so. And I believe I'd ask you to come to our next city council meeting, um, I haven't uh gotten confirmation yet, I think she will, just to give council an overview of of what's been happening.
You know, and that, you know, from what, from what I saw from the last results of the of the numbers that are out there, and I'm not sure how many of you, but I I put something in the newspaper uh that came out Friday uh about COVID nineteen and, you know, just urging the community to uh do what we can, all of us, to to mitigate this issue, because it's a, it's an issue that it just seems to be exploding here in Trinidad, and that causes us all concern. Well, with that, uh, if no one else has any other items that they want to discuss, uh, we will uh conclude the work session and go on to our special meeting. Okay, our special meeting, uh, today is Monday, October the twenty sixth, twenty twenty, the time is now seven eleven P M. And uh, we have a special meeting, item one is executive session. Well, before we do that, let's get a a roll call, please.
DeBono?
Here.
DeBono?
Here.
Gregor?
Here.
Ogletree? Here. Two? Williamson?
Here.
Rita?
Here. We have one item, it's executive session, for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B, communications with developers. Motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
I did, yeah.
DeBono?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Gregor?
Yep.
Ogletree? Yes. Two? Williamson?
Yes.
Rita?
Yes, let's go and take about the